Steve. Can we do a roll call, please?
Certainly, it's going to be a quick one, too. Ms. Wells?
Here.
Mr. Witherspoon?
Here.
Mr. Rowena?
Here.
And Mr. Schulman?
Here.
You do have a quorum.
Okay. Quick announcement. At the last council meeting, Mr. Rowena was reappointed to another term. And we're very happy, and we're all very happy about that. And as I said earlier, Ms. Marcella Sapon was appointed as a new member. Should she come on, I'll stop the meeting very briefly, just to introduce her. With that, the first item on the agenda, the public hearing for 132 Flax Hill Road has been removed from the agenda. Apparently, the developer made an error in their mailing. And as a result, I guess they have to reissue the mailing and we have to renotice the meeting, so we'll have that public hearing, I believe, at our next meeting, the first meeting of August. So with that, we'll move right down to review and action on pending applications. And the first of those is 2021-18R/SPR/CAM 25 Van Zandt Street condominium. With that, I would invite their representative to start talking with us.
Excuse me, I am recused from this, so I'll I'll leave and come back when it's over.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr. Chairman and members of the commission. My name is Hyrum Peck, representative, one of the team members for this particular application. In my recent correspondence with the planning director, he suggested that I give a very brief overview of what's changed since the last time you saw the application, so I'll do that. Our traffic engineer is here as well, and Mark may have some comments as well, but let me just go over very briefly what we've added to the application. First of all, staff suggested and the applicant agrees with a slight addition to the definition that was proposed as part of the regulation amendment, that definition of trade school vocational school be added to the application. We certainly agree with that, and we have no problem with that, so I just want to make that point for the record. We also note that we did not have last time the complete landscaping plan, which has been submitted as well. Landscaping plan has been done and submitted, and I believe forwarded to the commission for your review at this time. Hopefully, it meets the standards that you're looking for for that plan. In addition, we added a lighting plan, which also conforms, we believe, to the city's regulations with regard to lighting in the parking lot to make sure that folks will have safe and adequate access to and from their vehicles in the hours of darkness. We also did a significant amount of work on parking standards, which was a question that the commission had and staff had last time, and I won't go over a tremendous amount of those details right now, Mr. Chairman, but just simply to say that we did look at the standards that the staff reviewed and put in the staff memo to the commission, and we have a few comments that we'd just like to make with regard to those. One is that the parking standards for this type of use, as you can see, vary widely across the state. We think that this particular situation is fairly unique in that obviously it's an urban situation, and the proximity to the station, to the railroad station is important as part of the parking and traffic calculation, parking calculation specifically for this particular application. Another thing that's kind of interesting in that one of the urban situations that was noted in the staff memo talks about .2 spaces per student, and that would really make the amount of required parking for our particular situation very, very low, at like 60 spaces. We have 300, probably slightly over 300 spaces, so we think that our proposal is within the guidelines, within the parameters of the parking standards that are brought up, and I certainly would not get into the details of that. I'm happy to let Mark Virtucci talk about that, should the commission have any questions. The other thing I think that's important to realize is that because the proximity to the transit, not only bus, not only the station, but also bike route on Van Zandt, actually right in front of the building. I'm not sure how heavily that's used right now, but I think that's certainly there as well. So we think that it has a bit of a transit connection that we think is valuable as well. And lastly, what I'd just like to mention, too, is that there's been a lot of back and forth with regard to the square footage of this particular building. As you know, it's a large building, there's no question about that. The net leasable area in this building, 229,000 square feet. So there are 79,000 other square, other square feet in the building, 265 gross square feet, 229 leasable. So as staff points out, there are certainly a number of other square footage amounts that are not leasable. That is, those are set aside for things like halls, utility rooms, storage rooms, maintenance rooms, loading docks, and those kinds of things, and we're happy to talk about that at the public hearing or whenever the commission would find it to your satisfaction.
I'm sorry, Mr. Peck, if I can interrupt for just a minute, because I'm not sure I understand this issue of leasable versus non-leasable. Are you saying that there is total leasable space of 229,000 square feet?
That's correct.
And how many square feet are you saying would be used for these schools?
What we've asked for, Mr. Chairman, is a maximum of 150,000 square feet. So it comes out to about 59, 58 or 59% of the building total for this particular use. We understand completely that the commission can look at that and look at that maximum and decide, is it maximum good? Is it slightly, is it too slightly high, or is it appropriate for the amount of parking we have? We understand that very much.
And I guess my question is, for the balance of that space, that 79,000 square feet that is still leasable, has that been figured into your parking calculation? And if so, how?
Yeah. I'll make a couple of quick comments on that, and then I'll let Mark Virtucci talk about that, because he's the traffic engineer, sir. The other uses are comprised of things like daycare center, for example, for people that are already in the building. There's a cafeteria that's also in the building. There's also the restaurant cafeteria, where people would not come in off the street, for example, to use either one of those facilities, so that's certainly part of it. There's a greenhouse, for example, facility that's in the building, which probably has a very small, maybe one or two people in it as well. So we're happy to give a complete breakdown of all that space, should you like that, and if that's something that you'd like to see, we're happy to do that, absolutely. Mark, I didn't know if you had anything else. I'm pretty much finished with my comments anyway. If there's anything else you want to talk about, that'd be great.
Not much, Hyrum. Mark Virtucci, for the record, from Traffic Engineer from Boston O'Neill. But I think I, you know, just briefly recap what I presented last time, you know, our parking calculations in the study that we submitted did include, they're based off 300 people, students and faculty for the Workforce Training Center. And then the balance was, you know, office space, mini warehouse, storage use and daycare use. And those parking numbers were just simply generated based on your zoning requirements, and then we adjusted them based on shared parking analysis, a time of day analysis. And also with a transit credit, as Hyrum described, you know, we're very close to Metro North. We have good walking and biking facilities in the area, so we don't expect every person to drive to the site. We're going to see some multimodal use here. So to answer your question in a nutshell, yes, we, you know, the parking study, the parking calculations include all of the uses within this building that are going to generate a parking demand. Now, there's some ancillary uses, as Hyrum mentioned, that, like a greenhouse, a cafe, that aren't going to generate a parking demand, because they're there just to support the, you know, the existing uses in the building.
But we are talking here of virtually 80,000 additional square feet, which is a very substantial number. So I think that if we're going to put this on the agenda for a public hearing, you're certainly going to have to more fully address that issue. We're going to need to know how that space, exactly how the space is going to be used, what the parking demand, the additional parking demand is going to be as a result of those uses. Again, I understand cafe fairly limited, certainly greenhouse fairly limited, but those two uses certainly aren't going to amount to just about 80,000 square feet.
No, no, the 80,000 is office space, there's daycare, there's some mini warehouse use in there. And those are outlined in Table 8 of our summarized the parking demand for each of the uses within the building hour by hour basis to determine the maximum.
Steve, any comments from staff?
I think I would echo the chairman's sentiments about making sure everything's accounted for, you know, in terms of what uses are overlapping, who's there for the other users at the same time that the schools in attendance first, you know, other classes at night, other classes during the day. It sounds like the peak demand for classes may be daytime versus evening. But what are those overlaps are, and are the, is the parking total on site sufficient to accommodate all the different users?
What I would also suggest, too, is, in the last memo that I submitted, I did give a breakdown of the hours of operation, because I know that was a requirement of your previous memo. So I believe that's in your hands now, but I will happy to work with the rest of the team members to get you that specific breakdown that you want. We're anxious, obviously, to have this go to public hearing, and we're happy to provide that information to make that work. Last comment I'd like to make, too, and I think it's an important one here, is that I know that the staff has sent the application to DPW with regard to drainage, and we're, I think we're still waiting for them to get back to us, but I just want to reiterate at this point in time, there's absolutely no change in impervious area of the site, site area for this particular application. The parking lot will be repaved, but there won't be any changes in where curb cuts are located or any change in the drainage at all. So I think that's all, unless the commission or chairman has any other questions, I'm happy to answer those.
I had a question. When this application first came, I can't remember how long ago it was, I think a year or so ago.
One year.
There was, there was a question about an easement in favor of the state of Connecticut that would possibly impact the parking. What happened with that?
I did a lot of research with that, actually. I contacted Metro North and DOT. They've indicated to us that the easement for our parking, actually on a small strip of land, a Metro North property, is in place already. I've asked for a copy of that easement, and so I can present it to you, and we obviously would like to get it filed on the land records as well. I think there are about 56 parking spaces affected by that easement. It is in place now. I have confirmation from DOT that is in fact in effect, and I've asked them for a copy of it, so I could present that to you, just to make sure that that's part of your record. Happy to do that.
So again, the easement that you're talking about gives this property 56 additional spaces? Or 56 spaces?
There are 56 spaces. They're within that number of spaces that we've counted as part of our application.
But I thought the easement that we were talking about a year ago was where this property was given to the state of Connecticut, an easement. It seems to me, I remember, it was like right down the middle of the parking lot or something.
No, I can have the attorneys address that, you know, either now or when you get ready to go to public hearing, but that easement doesn't add.
I would like to see that before we go to public hearing, not necessarily now, but as a written submittal that staff can pass on to the commission, so we can look at it before.
Sure, absolutely, no question.
Okay, again, can you clarify for me? The number we've seen is that there are 300 spaces allocated for this project. Does that 300 spaces include the 50 odd spaces in this easement? Because if so, it would seem to me that those 50 spaces are potentially at risk.
Well, the easement for the permanent use of those spaces, Mr. Chairman, is on record, and DOT has agreed that it's on record and will continue to be available to this property for parking. So I'm happy to show you that. You can make of it what you will. Happy to talk to DOT if you'd like. Mark, I don't know if you have anything else to say about that, but as far as I know, those 56 spaces are included in the 300 that we're counting.
Mr. Chairman, if I might. Of record means different things to different people, Mr. Peck. And I think that it really would be helpful for your attorneys to provide something tantamount to a certificate of title or something with regard to this, so we know what we're talking about. I mean, if the DOT has decided that they have a record in their offices, that doesn't mean anything as far as Norwalk Town clerk's land records are concerned. So I would like to know what it is that you're talking about.
Sure, absolutely. Happy to provide it, and that's why I've asked DOT for a copy of that a couple of months ago, and I'm still waiting for that, but we'll have it very shortly, I'm sure.
But let me ask you this directly. To your knowledge, is whatever the easement you're talking about on the land records in Norwalk?
I don't know that, because we've looked for that and couldn't find it, and that's why I went to DOT to confirm that it in fact exists. The DOT agrees with it. It's been in place for some period of time, several years, anyway, perhaps seven or eight years. I don't know exactly whether it was filed or not, but we couldn't find it on the land record, so that's why I want to make sure that you have a copy of it. I'm happy to provide that to you.
All right, let's make sure that this issue is resolved before we go to a public hearing. Now, we, I'm sorry, Mr. Peck. Is that it for you?
It is, Mr. Chairman.
Okay. Michael, anything from you?
No, I guess if, so those spaces there included in the easement, is that the only agreement with the state that you know of that exists, that would a state not going to come back and try to get any more parking spaces from the owner?
That's correct. I mean, we believe that the report that was done and submitted is accurate and clear and verifiable, and we don't know of any other deductions that would take place with regard to parking on that site.
Okay.
And I'm going to repeat what I've said every single time this project has come up before us. And that is, I believe that we, as a commission, have expressed the fact that we like this project. And I I can't speak definitively, but I think, doing my best to speak for the group, which I have no right to do, that we would like to see this go forward. But there's always been some lack of information that's held us back and kept you from moving forward. I would like to see any issues resolved before we go to public hearing. And now to my, to my two colleagues, we have two ways, it seems to me, we can go on this. We could move the text amendment that they're asking for forward by recommending it or by moving it to the Planning Commission for action. The other option we have is not to do that until any unanswered questions have been fully answered, which would mean we would at least hold it up until our next meeting, and I'd like, you know, as a way of encouraging resolution of these questions. So I'd like to hear what you have to say about that. I'm comfortable doing that either way.
I personally wouldn't have any objection to moving the text amendment onto the Planning Commission, because I think the questions that I have asked and Michael Witherspoon have asked are clear title questions. And I don't know whether it's good or bad, but the commission has a transactional land attorney and an owner of a title company on the board, and we can look at the information that's submitted and make an opinion, so to speak, you know, in public. But I don't know what it is that I'm listening to at this juncture, so I agree with you. I like the project. I'd like to see it to move forward, but we can't just do a leap of faith on important things like parking.
I fully understand.
I would like to wait until we get all the answers to the questions that we have before we move anything forward.
Just, if I may interject quickly, just keep in mind that, you know, while your commission meets by month, twice a month, excuse me, Planning Commission meets only once a month, so we do have to refer that out. The text amendment itself applies to the industrial one zone, which goes to many areas of cities, so that also needs to get referred out to Connecticut Deep, Harbor Management, and it's possible a couple other municipalities as well. So that would automatically trigger like a 35-day window before you can even hear the public hearing on the text amendment itself, so I don't see necessarily a downside to starting that process. It sounds like you're probably would go the route of move both items at the same time, so we can at least start the clock on that, because it'll be at least, you know, from now, it's at least 35 days before you can hold a public hearing on that.
Okay. It's 6:27, and let me just note that our new commission member, Marcella Sapon, has joined us. Well, Michael, if you're comfortable, I'm certainly willing to move the text amendment to the Planning Commission for their action. After all, as Steve has said, it's a somewhat lengthy process, number one, and number two, it doesn't obligate us to take any action. We still don't have to approve the text amendment if for some reason we're not satisfied, and we still have the route of the public hearing on that text amendment. So if you're both comfortable with that, I'd suggest we move the text amendment forward. Steve, I'm not sure we're ready, however, to schedule a public hearing on the project itself.
Yeah, and I think the earliest you would, you know, 35 days, you're talking the earliest probably early September at this point, if I might have to do some math, but it's going to be a little while, just because of that clock.
That an acceptable resolution?
Yes, okay, moving it forward to the.
Thank you, Michael. Then that's what we'll do. We'll send the text amendment over to the Planning Commission. Anything else, Mr. Peck?
No, sir. Thank you very much, Mr. Chairman. We greatly appreciate it. We're obviously anxious to move this forward as well, so we'll make sure that you get all the information that you need as quickly as possible. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Next item, 2021-20R/M, zoning commission, building zone regulation text amendment to create the East Norwalk Village TOD Zone, EVTZ. This has been an ongoing conversation with the staff. Steve, you've been leading this conversation.
Sure, and this can be the shortest item on your agenda, which is fine with me. I don't have, I did not make any changes to the last series of documents that you saw related to this. If you remember, there's the TOD plan that was approved and made part of the plan of conservation and development for the East Norwalk area. There is a series of map amendments proposed, as well as text amendments. Along with that gets created a village district, which has accompanying design guidelines that go with it. We were discussing a few things that were kind of outstanding items. Brian and I have been doing some research on, one of the things was, just kind of in a nutshell, I guess, that the idea is that there's a baseline zoning for the area, and if someone wants to get some additional density and/or additional height, that they have to provide a series of amenities based on a point system that we've put together. And then the point system has different items based on that, whether, and then a big chunk of that was what we're calling sustainable amenities, like it could be solar, it could be different stormwater methodology or lead certification, something along those lines. Brian and I have been having some discussions with folks about how you determine a couple of things like the solar, because maybe we initially had it as square footage, but maybe it's better to look at a percentage of the roof, or maybe it's better to look at the percentage of the power generated, so that's like the kind of only little variable that we're not certain on. But I think we can figure that out fairly shortly. What I would recommend is that, since this is going to obviously require referral approval of the Planning Commission, it might make sense to hold a joint special meeting at the very beginning of September with the Planning Commission on this, and I can present the findings here, and then you can hear from the public, and then, you know, obviously, we'll make any tweaks that come out of that meeting, and then start the formal referral process to get that hopefully on the docket towards approval by, you know, before the end of the calendar year.
Well, I personally think it makes a lot of sense to bring the Planning Commission in as early as possible, so that we can partner on this together.
I agree.
All right, Steve, why don't you send us some dates? And let's find a date that works for both commissions.
Okay.
All right. Any other questions of Steve, any comments on this? Okay. If not, we'll move on to review and action on new applications. 2021-23 SPR MF DeScala and Company, 295 Westport Avenue, proposed Jimmy John's Restaurant. Let me remind you, we've actually had a previous discussion on this, and this is a site plan modification.
That's correct. I'm John Ryan, and I know it says on the screen that I'm Alan Weber, which I would never insult Alan by trying to be Alan Weber, but we decided to all meet at Alan's office, except for Mr. Roth, who'll come on in a second, who's there, and with me is Alan Weber, and Will Roth, and also here in person is Mike Galenti. And, Mr. Chairman, as usually you succinctly summarize this, this is kind of unusual for a site plan matter, even as a modification, because it's limited to solely a traffic issue, meaning that we have no other issues, there's no change of the footprint. The building was CO'd back in the mid-'90s, et cetera, et cetera, and what we're really doing here is substituting a approved use in the B2 zone for another approved use. The sole issue is staff was concerned about traffic concerns, and I know you have a long agenda, Mr. Galenti is well known to you, and he will be addressing that at length. So let me stop. So let me stop there and pass on the baton, so to speak, to Alan Weber. We'll speak to you for a second about background and then Mr. Roth will come on and then Mr. Galenti, who you know. Thank you.
Hello, I'm Alan Weber, Chief Financial Officer for MF De Scala and Company. Who is the owner of the property of two ninety five Westport Avenue. As you may know, we own a few of the shopping centers on Westport Avenue where Marshall's is. And then diagonally across the street where Austin, Austin Romano, Westport Auction is. Mike De Scala has been involved in this town, literally ever since he was born, I think. There's several other properties around the town. We love. Generally working with Norwalk, we haven't had any issues and we're very happy to. Have have Jimmy John's decide to have their first Connecticut location at our shopping center. Having a drive through available was a key component of why they. Came to our shopping center. This is the first Connecticut location for them. And we're hoping to be able to resolve the issues at hand so that they can move forward. Will Roth on who can talk now, he is he is with Jimmy John's and can just describe a little bit about their business. So Will, go ahead.
Thanks, Alan. So for some quick background, Jimmy John's is a fast food sandwich concept with over twenty six hundred franchise restaurants. Over eight hundred of which are drive-throughs. We differentiate ourselves from other sandwich concepts by being what we call. Freaky fast and freaky fresh. We are able to be so fast due to a simple menu and unique operating procedures. As franchisees, our team is pleased to bring Jimmy John's to Connecticut, which is our only franchise concept. Our operations will be led by Mike Mano, whose previous role was the Regional Director of Operations for La Pancretian. Where he operated twenty two New York City locations. We look forward to working closely with the city of Norwalk.
That was certainly tourist, wasn't it? Okay. And I was just gonna add, as Mr. Weber said, the beauty of this is that the tenant that is going out. Was a bank ranch and so we thought it made sense that we're configuring in somebody who wants to make use of the drive-ups. With that, then let me introduce Mike Galenti, who you know, and I didn't say for the record that my address is five Brook Street. Suite two B Derry in Connecticut, oh, six eight two oh, with Russo and Rizio, because we know you have to get that stuff in the record. Mr. Galenti, who you know?
Good evening, everyone. Mike Galenti, Frederick Clark. The former name is Frederick Clark. It's a city in Hanover. Now located on North Main Street in Norwalk itself. We weren't fair field for many years and we're now here. If I may, we were responsible for the traffic report and of course the discussions about site plan modifications related to traffic and safety. And I'm just going to spend a few minutes going over the traffic study summary. And I might add, we've certainly had discussions with traffic staff at City Hall and they had no comments on the traffic report. What their concerns were related to the site plan and we'll get to that in a minute or two towards the second part of my presentation. I'm just going to run through some slides to help you along. It's it's, everything's in the report, but this is just more of a summary of that. And Alan's actually working on the laptop for me. There we go. Great. Again, we did our first report, the full blown traffic report dated April of this year itself. And basically what we've done is a full traffic study analyzing to the driveway service, the shopping center itself. As mentioned, it's a now a former bank with three lanes for a drive-through. We're converting this to a one lane drive-through. As a sandwich shop and we do a comparison of the traffic generation by boat just for that information. But we certainly analyze the conditions for a bank, for a bank leaving and a sandwich store coming in. There we go. This is just a graphic from the report itself. I'm sure you all noted the shopping center located on the northerly side of Westport Avenue. One driveway on the west side has the traffic signal control, which controls the driveway and the street opposite. The Eastly driveway is a stop sign control and that's closest to the bank spot or portion of the building in the shopping center itself. And then to the rear Wolf Pit Avenue, there's a driveway where that's an entrance only. Although our traffic studies and counts showed it being used as a two-way driveway. Part of our modifications to the shopping center is to make sure that that function as an entrance only in the future. Just moving along, again, this is summary. All this information is in the report itself. We conducted traffic accounts. Yes, we're in a pandemic condition and there's a process we go through with Connecticut DOT. They have traffic data for Westport Avenue. As as you know, they just rebuilt that section along the side frontage. Were able to use that data and then expand upon that with more recent counts in in April of this year. We, there's adjustments obviously to bring it back up to a pre-pandemic condition and this is a process that the state of Connecticut reviewed. And and agreed to the process we have. We focused on the weekday lunchtime, obviously, or for a sandwich shop. The weekday afternoon, which is commuter time period. And then a Saturday lunchtime period, again, since these are the critical times for a sandwich shop as proposed for any fast food as proposed. Just real quickly, the volumes on the road, Westport Avenue obviously is the busiest road. The PM is the highest line with twenty one hundred vehicles. And I might add that our sandwich shops site traffic generation is as lowest during the, I'll call it the dinnertime. As far as people buying sandwiches, it's much busier at lunchtime in Saturdays. The other volumes there in Wolf Pit, which is a much lower volume and the site driveways, or east driveway is about sixty vehicles during the peak hours. This is a summary of a more detailed chart in the traffic report itself. And just focusing on the yellow highlighted area, and I'm going to just switch to my sheet because I can't see those numbers on the page, but I just happen to have a hot copy in front of me. We did a comparison between the bank use and the sandwich shop use. We generate more traffic because it's a different type of use. But the comparison is that we're adding about fifty trips on the roads outside the site itself during the peak hours. That's based on IT standards that we all talk about as traffic engineers. If you look at the Jimmy John's actual anticipated traffic, it's a much lower number and we're actually adding. Anywhere from four trips during the Saturday midday to about thirty trips during the weekday lunchtime period. The part where the city traffic department and staff was concerned was not with the traffic analysis, the volumes, they agreed with all of that. And I say they agreed, they didn't have any comments. So I assume they agreed and didn't write up any comments for us to respond to. All their comments were related to a site plan, which we'll get into a second. But the bottom table, the highlighted yellow column. That's the amount of traffic that's anticipated at the drive-through lane for Jimmy John's Sandwich Shop. And the busiest time is a lunchtime on a Friday. We, other weekday lunchtimes are about the same, but about twenty trips. That's twenty vehicles going through the drive-through over one hour period. We use thirty nine trips, which is the two hour period because they they focus on a two hour lunchtime period. So we just simply brought it down to twenty for the peak hour. But we use thirty in the analysis. Typical dinner time period, you'll see seven trips, seven cars going into the drive-through. That's when the busiest time as far as volumes on Westport Avenue in front of the site and obviously in front of the Eastly driveway, which is the concern of the city staff itself. That's just as a comparison and that's why we we feel the way we do about the drive-through working. And we just want to focus on those numbers. Top of the next page. I have to say it, and I guess I can as a traffic result, this is not Chick-fil-A. We know Chick-fil-A is a concern. I hear about it in every town we go to, not just along the coast. But I was actually in Southbury yesterday and they talked about it up there. So it's something that we're all well aware of and certainly familiar with the Connecticut site. It does generate traffic, it does have queuing. And I don't mean to pick on Chick-fil-A at all, but it's not the same as a Jimmy John's and these numbers give you a highlight. Chick-fil-A. To bring a customer through the drive-through, it takes about five and a half minutes to process that person. Dunkin' Donuts, which we all know is a very busy place early in the morning, it's over three and a half minutes to process a customer through the drive-through. Jimmy John's, it's ninety seconds, about a minute and a half. So when we say there's no comparison to a Chick-fil-A or other fast food restaurants, we have all that information. This has been tabulated by by others, not not me. At Horsie and Hanover, but we've reviewed all the data in great detail. And we went through all this information prior to submitting an application and prior to any discussions with city traffic engineering staff. Because we want to make sure that this application made sense from the perspective of the owner. Who's my client and Jimmy John, who's an applicant coming into the shopping center. Comparison between Jimmy John's processing, you can do about four orders at the same, compared to the same time for Chick-fil-A. Doing just one order. So there's a very different pattern of activity. And that's why we feel the queuing for about five cars and we break it down. It's, you know, it's two or three cars going into the drive-through, the order. One car waiting after they make that order while their sandwich is being made. And then one car sitting at the window, which is a relocated window than the bank window. So we're providing as much more space as possible. To process that person and their experience is that this type of setup is their format for all new. Jimmy John facilities, not only in Connecticut, but elsewhere. And yes, they are working on other Jimmy John sites in Connecticut. We are not the consultants on the others. We're just working on this one. But just focusing on this site, when we did our capacity analyses, as you know, I talked about this whole time levels of service. We're not changing anything. The driveways operate perfectly fine. There's no need to mitigate timing or traffic signal or make recommendations. Let's see if it goes to the next one. Oh, this is, we have to switch, right? One second. This is just a blow up and this is in your file. I've actually submitted this. Blow up of this plan twice yesterday and I think last week was attached with a different letter. We've responded three different times through comments from traffic staff and submitted those letters to consideration. Traffic staff, their concern is really on the site plan and they ask for certain things such as. You know, wayfinding around the shopping center, improved pavement markings and so on, and the review of the operation of the characteristics of this center. It's been around for a long time. It's basically a one-way clock, a counterclockwise format, except for the front drive, front aisle, which is two-way along Westport Avenue. And as I mentioned, there's two driveways, one a traffic signal on the west side and one of the stop sign control near the Jimmy John's store and then the entrance only. To the rear at the Wolf Pit Avenue arrival. We did a concept of laying out embedded controlling adjacent to the form of bank drive lanes. We added a bike rack, which was a request of the city, which we certainly weren't happy to do. We put signing and I know you can't see it on this, but there's a signing plan and some paper markings to enforce what's happening. And there have never been any issues with the former bank use or the other drive-through on the other side of the building as far as traffic flow. Deliveries and customers driving around the back of the building. So we're very comfortable with this. We added a don't block the box in front of the drive-through. To better control the area, but city staff still has a concern with the Eastly driveway. Which is at the throat, if you will, behind the drive-through entrance lane. There were some suggestions that were also mentioned in today's memo from Garrett Valera. From the city staff about potentially closing that Eastly driveway. And depending, there's a discussion on timing of that. We're certainly willing to work with the city on that. But we don't see this as a problem and we're not so sure we're ready to do that day one, but we'll be ready to do that as the process moves forward. The other, you know, the back driveway Wolf Pit driver, we're already proposing and planning on modifying that to kind of clean it up. So functions that one driveway. And the other point I want to mention, so I don't forget, because I did forget to put it in my letter yesterday, is, you know, the concern we have with closing the Eastly driveway. Is to, we want to maintain emergency access circulation through the shopping center. We have not had a chance to talk with fire or police. But we're assuming they would prefer to have the driveway remain open, which is the Eastly driveway, which the city staff is suggesting that we close. We're not quite ready to do that, but we're willing to work on that with the city if it was to become a problem. The other aspect I'll just touch on is there was a request for a continuation of the sidewalk from the Wesley driveway to Wolf Pit Avenue intersection. There's an asphalt driveway there. Again, we feel that the state improvements, they purposely ended the sidewalk there and created the crosswalk at the traffic signal to shift the pedestrian. On the south side, the city staff would like to continue the sidewalk to the east, to the west of Wolf Pit. And I believe they're committing to do that. And I'll leave it at that. I can certainly answer any questions, but I wanted to give. Everyone on the commission and city staff a pretty short but detailed review of what we've, what we've done since April. And I'll leave, Johnny, you want to jump back in? Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Galenti, who was comprehensive as always. And I'm just going to close by saying we understand that there was a certain amount of light and heat generated by the Chick-fil-A situation. And Mr. Galenti covered that, that we are not them. And as usual, we've worked extensively with staff. And so if there's any questions the commissioners have, please pose them to us.
Well, I I I would agree that I don't believe we we have any problem with. The the traffic study itself. I certainly would agree that. The added traffic, to the extent there is any, is is certainly manageable. What I'm concerned with is a sixth vehicle. Wanting to access the restaurant and being stuck on. Westport Avenue in either direction, holding up traffic. Yeah, you're absolutely right. You know, this isn't Chick-fil-A, but all it takes is that sixth vehicle. To cause the problem and. And frankly, it seems to me it's just bound to happen at some point. You can't, you know, you you can't meter cars. So that they they come at an even pace if, you know, at ten minutes afternoon. Six cars pull up and want to be serviced. We're stopping traffic. And while it may not be as extensive as. Every bit as hazardous as as Chick Chick-fil-A was earlier.
Mr. Jennifer, I may, it's Mike Galenti again, just in reference to the. The the sixth car would not be on Westport Avenue if there was to be a sixth car waiting in in line. You probably have room for two or three more cars behind the fifth car as far as queuing. But we realize that that is a concern also and that's why we have blocked the, don't block the box, signing within within the site itself. And there's been some discussions here as far as controlling that. And I'll let Alan or John refer to that a little bit more, but there are ways of closing the drive-through window if necessary. There's options to put a policeman there to see if it is a problem and control it better. And then there's always the option of looking at closing the driveway in the future, although we would recommend keeping an exit only. And maybe just closing the entrance only because we need that circulation through the shopping center, not only for emergency vehicles, but for customers in front of the building for other stores. So I just just wanted to answer that question and I can obviously answer more questions as you go along.
Let me just make a comment. If you look at, if you can see the map that's on the screen, you can see the hatched in area that's right here. And then additionally, there is. The the apron here. So if there happened to be. An extra couple of cars, those two cars, you could easily accommodate two, if not three more cars. Beyond the. The five cars that's. That's shown.
In the queue.
In the queue and we would be doing, we would be having the don't block the box. So if somebody came and they were. I know not everybody is a reasonable person that follows directions, but if they see the don't block the box and there is a car there, then. They either park and go in or they circle back around and and or they just decide that they don't come. But it's not, it's not, it's definitely not the sixth car and definitely not the seventh car that would cause the problem. And based on everything we've heard from Jimmy John's as well as through Mike's studies is. Never believed, I mean, never say never, but we we don't believe that this would be. An occurrence at all, or if it was minimal, where we go beyond five, never mind up to up to seven.
Other questions?
Comments from the other commissioners? If not, I have a question, Steve, for you and that is. Literally just before this meeting, we got the T M P report. I don't believe any of us have had an opportunity to review it. I was wondering if you could summarize it for us.
Sure, and if, Mike, if you could just leave that or whomever, just leave that image up there that.
Yes, it'll stay.
Sure. So in summary, I actually sat down with Garrett and Jim Travers this afternoon. And went through their their concerns and Mike hit on many of them. They have. Some recommendations and I think the three of us were all in agreement that. That if this queuing becomes a problem at all, that that's a problem. I I think the idea of the don't block the box is fine, but having getting off at exit sixteen on ninety five every morning to come to work. Nobody pays attention to that. Don't lock the box right on the, you know. Don't lock the box right on the, you know, people just ignore that anyway. So I, I, I think while that, that makes sense, I don't know if it will actually have any impact. What they have recommended is several, several items for your consideration. They, they would like to see the, the entrance, this entrance here. I guess that's the eastbound entrance removed and then only have that be exit only. And they would like to see that happen now. So that way, when you come in, you're entering in off of Wolf Pit. And then the queue actually wraps the building and then brings you around, around the building into the drive-through. And when then you can go out and exit, exit out back on either the, the westbound or the eastbound exit again. It's, you know, it's circulating the cars around the, the building an extra trip or so, but it's keeping them off of the, the road network. And they also had some recommendations in terms of making Wolf Pit, I believe, make that entrance only. So that's where vehicles would entrance in off the
It currently is an entrance only.
Yeah, so they want to make sure that that's inaccessible. So they had some bump out proposals in terms of hardscape. So that would be, would no longer be accessible. Because I, I understand people probably ignore the signage and just do what they like. I know we've had that concern in the past, even when you put those, this kind of raised concrete islands there that technically are made to prevent folks from taking turns in a certain direction. But people sometimes mount those, those curves anyway. So they would ask for that at that location. And they did also have a recommendation about extending the sidewalk. As you can see it on the, the western side of the site, it kind of stops. They would like to see that extended. I, I, you know, I did speak with them. I said, I don't know if I have, you know, the, the ability through this process to, to require that sidewalk extension with their rationale being that, you know, that will improve access to the property and to the, the new business by allowing folks who may wish to, you know, walk there versus having to rely on vehicular access to the site. But I think the main things that they had were certain infrastructure improvements. And I can, if you could stop sharing, Mike, I can pull up their, pull up their memo.
Steve, can I interrupt you for just a second? Is, is what they're suggesting a clockwise circulation going in what that two-way current, two-way entrance exit that, that's on the left as opposed to going in to the entrance on the right-hand side closer to West?
Yeah, this is a partial picture. So this is from their memo. So that you have the option of entering here, which is off of Wolf Pit to the north or to the rear of the site, so to speak. So they would enter in, circulate around the building. Obviously, the, the picture stops, but as you can remember, enters around the building, wraps back in and enters the drive-through from, from here. And this would no longer allow vehicles to enter in at this location. It would be solely for exit only. And they had some other, like small infrastructure improvements in here as well as making this so even though it's already not supposed to be servicing X, an exit would truly look in function more as only preventing, only allowing access into the site from that location as opposed to a two-way circulation.
But just to be clear, it's a, it's a counterclockwise circulation. It's not a clockwise circulation.
Which is what that's existing.
And that, and that exists, that's been there for, that's been there forever. And that's worked whether, when it was a bank on either end with all the other tenants in the back, that's worked perfectly with no problems for a long, long time.
Well, I, I think the, the concern is that the, and look, everybody's been to a bank drive-through. And I think that, that happens so much less now. People go to banks, half what they used to do in the past. There were also multiple lanes for accessing the, the banks. You know, you could pull up and use the tube system and enter your deposits or whatever you were doing there.
I did, I was just more wanted to clarify. He had said it clockwise and I just wanted to clarify that it was counterclockwise.
Yeah, it's definitely counterclockwise. I think that the, I think, and I'm trying, you know, not trying to speak for the commission, but I think the last thing that, you know, you guys want, Jimmy Johns wants, and definitely the city or the commission wants is to have incidents like we had at Chick-fil-A. And that's going to do nothing but get bad press for all parties involved. So I think that's, that's our main goal. As much as we understand the model is, is different than some of the other establishments you mentioned. I, I think anytime there's something shiny and new, people are drawn and attracted to it. And if the product is as good as you indicated, I tend to think that that will mean you'll have a robust business. So I think we want to make sure that, you know, there, it functions and you, you do great business, but there's no backup in impediments on Westport Avenue.
Yes, and we agree is just the detriment to the rest of the shopping center. And, you know, they're 2,000 feet, the rest of the shopping center is over 30,000 square feet. The detriment to the rest of the shopping center for not having that entrance and a real circulation and just having one, essentially one entrance on the, on the westerly side of the property is something that until we know there's a problem, we don't think is, is something that is that makes sense for the rest of the shopping center. And, you know, we, we would certainly commit to doing it if, if this because, if, if this is a detriment to the shopping center and to, and to Westport Avenue, we would, in that letter was stated, how, how do they, how do you guys make us do it? When, if we're up there, they have a certificate of occupancy, we'd be happy to put up a bond of whatever makes sense. If there becomes a problem, we, and we say, okay, we have to do it, but it's not, but you can't snap your fingers and it happens. We would commit to hiring a police officer during peak times to manage, to manage the traffic until we could get those improvements in. But to have them be there for day one, never mind as Mike Galante said, that the fire department may not want it because only having one real access into the, into the property, for some reason that access is blocked off. They, you know, they have a hard time wiggling in through, through Wolf Pit Avenue. Had, you know, having just the one entrance to a shopping center of this size doesn't, you know, if you look at all, most of the shopping centers around, they have two main accesses on, on the main road. And we just feel that it would be more of a detriment than anything to have that when we don't think there's going to be a problem with the drive-through to begin with and what the, the traffics, the traffic studies have, have shown.
I, I'm not convinced frankly, that your traffic study has shown that. Number one. Number two, I wonder if it wouldn't be worth your while to invest in a little more work for Mr. Galanti to at least take a professional look at what's being suggested. Be, be, before saying that it's unacceptable out of hand.
Well.
I mean, I, I, I think if, if, if we were to approve this and there's a problem, a police officer is not going to be able to solve this problem. Again, you're not Chick-fil-A, but we did see that the police officer working with Chick-fil-A was not able to keep backups off Connecticut Avenue. And I think the same would be true here.
As I'm saying, we would commit to do the work. If there, if, if there becomes a problem, we would commit to do it. But doing it before we know there's a problem to potentially, to, to the potential detriment of the rest of the shopping center is where we have a, have a hangup.
What I'm suggesting, what I'm suggesting is that you just look at it professionally. And, you know, if, if a professional look at this suggests that it's going to hurt the shopping center, you know, you, you may be able to convince us that we should move forward in the way you're suggesting. But I'm, I'm not, I'm not convinced of that at this time.
Okay, Mr. Jen, if I may, I mean, obviously we did a traffic study with the driveways, the way they are configured today, you know, two-way driveways and one-way in the back. I think we're just suggesting is that we would go out and model this if we closed the Eastly driveway and shift that traffic to the main driver with the traffic signal and see how it operates in a model world, not, not in real, real world, but model world. To see if that driver would continue to operate at acceptable levels of service and minimal delay. If we, if we lose the driveway, I think that's what you're saying, right?
Right.
Right, okay.
Or, or, you know, or if there is, you know, I'm not a traffic engineer. Or if there is another alternative that, you know, you as a professional feel can address our issues without, without hurting the, the rest of the shopping center. None of us want to see that.
Right.
I'm more concerned about the practicality of, if, if we don't have that entrance, somebody's going to say this shopping center is really inconvenient to get, to get in and out of. And I'm going to go to the dry cleaner in the other shopping center of the street or I'm going to go to the other nail place or I'm going to the other sandwich shop. Because, you know, coming from the Westport side of things, you know, coming down the road, it's, it's, it's inconvenient to get into our shopping center. The, I'm, you know, the, the, the traffic part of is, is there going to be more of a backup at the traffic light at our, at our other entrance? I would doubt is, is an issue. I'm, I'm, I'm talking about the prac, the practicality of, of just it, it being inconvenient for people to come into our shopping center and therefore our tenants are, are damaged. And frankly, I don't, I don't know if I would take the chance of, of having Jimmy Johns come in there if, if, if we were taking the chance of damaging the rest of our tenants with something that we don't know that, again, we don't know that it's going to be a problem.
So you're saying it's a solution in search of a problem at this point, right?
We'll say that again.
You're saying that right now, this alternate proposal is a solution looking for a problem because you don't know if you have a problem yet. But you're saying you have a problem, you are willing to, to go with this solution. Do I understand?
Correct. Yes, that, that's a correct statement. If Jimmy Johns is doing that much of a gangbuster of business, that's God bless them. And there's, and it's that many more people coming to our shopping center that, you know, this becomes a real problem. Then, you know, at that point, we would commit to doing it because we know that, that they're a success. And, you know, people are going to continue coming to the shopping center. But right now, when we don't feel that it's going to be a problem, making our shopping center, we know it makes the shopping center worse. That's, that's, you know, we have a lot of experience in shopping centers and we know that for a fact. If you don't, if you don't have two main entrances to circulate around it, people aren't going to come. They're going to go to somewhere else because there's plenty of nail places, plenty of, you know, plenty of dry cleaners. Advance Auto in there. I, I don't think Advance Auto frankly would be very happy if we, if, if we did this without good reasoning to do it outside of possibly preventing a problem that we don't think exists to begin with.
Steve, is there a mechanism for being sure that if a problem, they must go forward and change?
Well, that, that's kind of where I was just going. So you, you'd make me put my bad guy hat on and if.
I said, we put up a bond of whatever, you know.
Yeah, but that, that doesn't, I mean, so there's a, a Friday afternoon at one o'clock and there's 10 cars backed up on route one and the police chief's calling me, why the heck did you approve this? And what's going on here? And I'm getting calls and complaints. Then, then what happens? Do we shut the drive-through down until you make these improvements?
Yes, and that's the other thing that I was gonna, that I was gonna mention and, and Will Roth can talk more about this as well as we, we literally had, they have the ability with a switch to say, drive-through closed. And they will, and they will commit to, if, if there's a problem where you're, they're backing up into our, into the grid, the grid box, never mind out onto the streets, backing up into the grid box, they'll close the drive-through. And it's, it's in, 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 in five seconds, they can do that.
And Will, I, if you want to talk. Yeah, I can talk a little bit about how we do that operationally. But the, I, I first, I first want to quickly try to go through, you know, I think people find it hard to conceptualize what makes Jimmy Johns different and what makes it so much faster than these other concepts. And I'll try to do it quickly. But, you know, first of all, there's, there's the sales difference. You know, McDonald's is doing 2.9 million sales per year versus Jimmy John's system-wide average is 760,000. And then our, our ticket size is much larger than theirs. You know, ours is around 1330. McDonald's, for example, is $6.50. So that's a lot less transaction. Then their drive-through at stores with drive-throughs, it's about 70% of their sales. Ours at stores with drive-throughs is about 50% of our sales. So you, you look at that and it's about 9.7 times less transactions at our drive-throughs. That doesn't include late night with, with McDonald's. If you take that out, it's about 6.5 is what we find. Now, I, I understand these are all averages, but then the other, the other, and savages for both McDonald's and for Jimmy Johns. But then the other aspect to think about is our brand proposition of being freaky fast and how committed we are to that. If you look at what we do with delivery is we do not deliver. And this is a, this is a brand standard. You, you, you're not allowed as a franchisee to deliver outside of six minutes of your store. So they draw a circle around the store and you're not allowed to drive. They test it out and you're not allowed to drive, pass that to deliver sandwiches. That's for speed. And, and you do the same thing at every level of your operation. So if your drive-through is not working, if, if, if we see that queue, we can, we can first of all prioritize our drive-through orders over in-shop and delivery. They're, they're always, they're always prioritized over delivery. So we see the queue, we can do that. And then, and then like Alan said, we always have the ability to shut down our drive-through service at any point. It could, it could be, it could be as simple as a sign or it could be as simple as turning off our drive-through and letting the cars know that we're not accepting drive-through orders at this time. And you, you, they would have to walk, they'd have to walk, park and walk in if they wanted sandwiches.
How, how do you let the cars on Westport Avenue that may be queuing know that the drive-through is closed when it's set, setback 60 or 70 feet?
We would have to get, we would have to stop, we would have to stop the drive-through by the time it got to the do not box. So it would be, if, if you're, if our queue got to five cars, so one at the pickup window, you know, two more, one at the order boarding and two more. Then that's when we would have to shut down our drive-through and bring all the cars through. And like, and like we said, you know, our, our average drive-through transaction time is 90 seconds. We actually require our, our, our sandwiches to be able to be made. And our, our French, French sandwich is 30 seconds. We, not to go too much detail, but wheat sandwiches in 45 seconds. We have no hot sandwiches. It's, it's, you know, deli meats, a simple, a simple menu. There's about five meats that we offer and then it's vegetables. So.
I would think there could be some kind of even electronic sign on the, there's a, there's a covering that goes across the shopping center that was there for the bank drive-throughs that has, you know, ATM and drive-through and drive-through. You could put an electronic sign up there that says, drive-through open, a switch inside that says, drive-through closed. So again, before it gets out to Westport Avenue, unless there's four people following each other, all in separate cars to come, as soon as it's seen that there's somebody, that there's somebody parked in that box, parked in that box, you close it down to give, to get rid of, and then you clear all the cars out. And then, and then you open it up again. It's, it wouldn't, it wouldn't be when it gets backed up to Westport Avenue. It'd be when it, when it gets, when it gets to the box, when it gets anything beyond five cars.
Yeah, who's, who's monitoring that though? How do you, how, how do you, if I'm busy making sandwiches or making sure that people are making sandwiches, who's, who's watching queue of cars out in the parking lot?
So our POS system actually shows us the, the queue.
There's a, there's a video. It could be a video at the, at the cash.
Kind of a video, but sort of.
Okay, well, all managers have the power or authority to shut down the drive-through if they see cars are queuing into the box.
Yep.
Okay.
Sounds like a heck of a business model.
Well, we do, we do with delivery, so we are committed. I mean, we're, we're, we're fine with losing sales to, to, to commit to speed. I mean, that, we, we've proven that with our delivery model, so. Um, yeah, there, there is a sacrifice for sales, um, but I, I think it's, it would be an important part of our business model.
It's more important for them to be able to have the drive through available. There's a reason that they came here because an existing drive through was there. I highly doubt we could even get approved another drive through, you know, they didn't know drive through approved somewhere else. Um, that didn't have one. So that was why they came is because there was already one here. So this wouldn't. They wouldn't be here if the drive through wasn't there.
Well, Steve, the bottom line here is. We really can't act. Uh, until. The, the applicant. Uh, has responded to, uh, the TPM memo. Uh, to the satisfaction of the city. So I would suggest that we wait until that happens. Uh, hopefully very soon, maybe at our next meeting. And hopefully by then have a, a, a resolution that works for the city and that works for. Uh, Jimmy John's and for the, uh, uh, Mr. De Scalo.
Is there, is the next meeting in two weeks or four weeks?
I believe it's August 5th.
Okay. That's better.
Is that, is that, am I right about that, Steve? Okay. Am I also right about the facts here?
As far as I, as I agree to, yes.
Okay. All right, um, so. We'll ask you to work with, uh, the folks from. Uh, TPM and, uh, Steve and his staff. And we'll look forward to seeing you with a, um, resolution that works for everybody. Uh, at our meeting on the 5th.
Okay.
Okay, we will, we will contact them and.
Okay.
Get a, some kind of face to face or Zoom meeting with them rather than sending letters back and forth.
Sounds good. Thank you very much.
Thank you, everybody.
Uh, next item on the agenda, 2021-29 CAM Crystal LLC. Uh, 314 Wilson Avenue. Uh, this is CAM and also a site plan review.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. For the record, Liz Suchi. I represent Crystal LLC, which is the applicant today.
You need to tell us where you are today.
Oh, this, I'm sorry, this is, um, above Positano on the path of the gods. Sorry. But I'm, I'm sitting remotely in Wilton. So again, Liz Suchi, I'm a partner at Carmody Torrance. I represent Crystal LLC, which is the applicant on the CAM application before you this evening. So thank you for having us. And I extend my warm, warm welcome to Commissioner Sapon and I wish her. Um, an interesting and pleasant tenure as the newest zoning commissioner. So welcome. Um, as I indicated, I'm Liz Suchi on the call, on the meeting tonight also is Joe Grasso, a principal of Crystal LLC. And Eddie Fami, who is Mr. Grasso's restaurant consultant, in case you have any questions of either of them. A matter of housekeeping, we did send letters to budding property owners notifying them of the submission of the application on the 2nd of. July. In accordance with your regulation, no one has been in touch with me. We also submitted the certificate of mailing back to staff, so it should be in the official file.
Attorney Suchi, did, did that include any of the residents of Village Creek?
Yes, it did. It included all of the residents that, whose properties, whose backyards about Village, Village Creek. So. We went across Village Creek and did that entire row of those property owners on that side. All of them were noted. As noted is. The property 314. If I may ask, Brian, if you could screen share the survey, I would be appreciative. It's District 5, Block 85, Lot 84. The property is owned industrial number one, which allows retail and restaurant uses. And the property is about 30 acres in size and extends to the north. Right next to us is the, the bus depot for the Norwalk school buses. Here's the survey. So the bus depot is all the way to where the, the cursor is right now. Uh, Village Creek is generally to the east of the site and there are shellfish beds in that salt marsh, but those shellfish beds are closed to recreational shell fishing and have been closed for many years. Uh, to the, I guess it's the west of us. Is the Sono Ice House in the parking lot of the Sono Ice House. Across the street is the Norwalk Transit District. And also Commerce Packaging. And for those who are unfamiliar, that unusual building on the corner of Sheehan Avenue, which is reminiscent of the castle in The Wizard of Oz. That used to be the old Norwalk Community College building. So those are the buildings that surround us and the, the properties and activities. Uh, the lot that's shown on this survey as NF Crystal LLC, where the, right, right where the cursor is underneath the word Avenue. That used to be a hill and Mr. Grasso and others removed the hill and there is now a brand new two story building there that I suspect is going to be used as self storage. Or something similar. So that's the brand new building that's right on that. Uh, portion of the property and it's right up against Wilson Avenue. Uh, the building that's the subject of the application, this portion of it is in the middle of the screen. It's about 54,000 square feet. It was built in the twenties. There are a variety of different tenants in this building right now, including. Uh, Blackbridge Motors, Strigo Coffee, Candide Landscaping and others. There's around 170 parking spaces on the site. So the area that's in question is, if you look to the right of the word warehouse. There's an, an area with a circle in the middle of it, generally there where Brian's kindly using the cursor. That's the area where the, in previous years, not only the farmer's market, but beer garden were approved and operated. And we're looking to reactivate those very uses in that exact area once again. Um, Brian, may I ask you to screen share one or two of the photos if you wouldn't mind? That would be great. So as I mentioned, the, the proposal is to once again create a farmer's market and beer garden. They're almost identical to what was approved in 2011, which was also modified in 2012. And then again in 2013. In 2013, the zoning commission modified the prior approval to allow live music. This photo was taken this morning and that is the area where the beer garden and farmer's market would be reactivated if all approvals are secured. It is to the left of where, um, Blackbridge Motors operates in the corner of the build, that brick building. And to the left of that, uh, roofed over area is an access way to the back to an existing contractor's yard in the back. About 5,300 square feet plus or minus of area for the public to congregate. Sample the products that are manufactured on the site by some of the 50 odd. Pervaders of food and, and other products who currently operate within the building. And then to have a beer, have a drink and, and gather together in this area. That's the concept. That's what the concept was in 2011. And existed from about 2012 to 2014. The proposal would be for a seasonal operation this year, generally Thursdays and Fridays from four to 11, Saturdays and Sundays from noon to 11. Six to eight servers, bar, some bartenders and a man, and a site manager. And we proposed live music as had been approved in 2013, which would be required to comply with the city's revised noise ordinance. We have no reason to. Believe that we would not be able to comply. This portion of the, 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 the open courtyard is surrounded on two sides by building. And it also buffers Village Creek with the back of the building as well. So we're pretty confident that we won't have an issue with noise. As I said, food would be prepared by various purveyors who use the existing commercial kitchen that's also approved in the building. Uh, alcoholic and non-alcoholic beverages would be served. A restaurant liquor permit would be secured from the state of Connecticut and with that permit, hot meals must be served regularly on the premises and there must be a kitchen sufficiently adequate. To provide those meals, otherwise restaurant liquor permit would not be able to be secured. And the additional suggestion that we, we, or the additional request earlier this week is that. After 2021, we would like to be able to expand to year round daily activities in 2022, whether permitting. So we added that, this earlier this week so that we wouldn't have to come back to you if in fact you deem it appropriate to approve this application. We have submitted the application and supporting documents to the Transportation, Mobility and Parking, SNU, WPCA, Fire, Health, Harbor and DPW. We've received sign offs from all but Harbor Commission, which will take a quick look at this next week since the property is within the CAM zone. And Department of Public Works has not issued its sign off. They did share comments earlier this week. I responded directly to Mr. Jaron. But I believe he's on vacation until next week, so we weren't able to secure his approval and the departmental sign off prior to tonight's meeting. I, that's kind of it in a nutshell. It really is just reactivating that use that was approved in 2011. Modified in 2012 and then again in 2013. And this time around, Mr. Grasso has employed a well-known restaurant. Consultant to help him manage and make this a viable and. Vibrant location for someone to come and have a beer, have something to eat. Pick up some, some of the, the items that are sold and manufactured on the premises and activate this small portion of these, this building. There's sufficient parking on the site for all the, for the farmer's market and for the. Beer garden, since it would operate in hours that generally, um, are off hours from when the tenants in the building. Would be there and be activated. But there are more than sufficient number of parking spaces as our plans show to accommodate all of the uses. At any time, given the requirements for the different users on the premises. If you have any questions for me, I'm happy to answer them. Mr. Grasso, I'm sure would be happy to answer as would Mr. Fami and we look forward to hearing your comments.
Attorney Suchi, um, my, my, I had been to. This facility in, um. Its previous life. And I certainly have no. Problem with that. Uh, I'm a little bit concerned about the use of music. And the possible impact it may have. Uh, on the residents of Village Creek. I don't know. What their expectations are, but with most projects. Um, they're used to being involved in a, a public hearing and they may have felt that, um. There would be a public hearing here as well. And while one is not required. We, we certainly could hold one. Again, the only, the only concern I have is, um. The potential impact of, of the music.
And I can appreciate that, Mr. Schulman. Um, I do think that the suggestion that staff had as a condition of approval that we provide a noise report, acoustical report. Uh, at the time we apply for a zoning permit is an appropriate one. And that would have to evaluate what types of music are there, what type of amplification. I think in past approvals, there was no, there was no permission granted for amplification beyond that which. Was necessary for the, the space for the farmer's market and beer garden. But we'd be happy to supply a, as staff suggested, a noise report, acoustic report analyzing what we propose to do and in accordance with the, the city's new noise ordinance. And should there be issues that we need to address and mitigation measures, we will, we will employ those. I think that's probably, um. A sound and appropriate way to address your concerns at this point. And should there be issues, the health department has already indicated we must comply with the noise ordinance. My client is aware of that. And I, I think there's, there are sufficient safeguards in place that a public hearing will. Uh, we've already committed to the fact that we would comply. But I'll leave that to the commission's discretion.
Comments from the other commissioners? Any comments from staff?
Um, nothing further than what's, what's really in the, our memo. I mean, again, with the sound. It was approved previously under the original permit that was issued, you know, 2011. And the, the noise ordinance, the applicants agreed to other, other things. If you're, if you're concerned about it, you could potentially limit hours of the, the music or. Um, any other additional safeguards like that. That would be up to you guys.
Attorney Suchi, i- i- is it the intention? To, uh, uh, offer, uh, the music through the 11 o'clock hour?
Um, I think the, the intention would be to offer it as, as long as and up to whatever the noise ordinance allows. And I think the noise ordinance is somewhat restrictive on what can be conducted after eight, nine, 10 o'clock. So whatever the, the, the commission deems appropriate. Recognizing that we are bound by the, the noise ordinance. If you decide that 11 o'clock is too late. That's certainly within your discretion to say they, that music must end at an hour that, a time that's more appropriate. Um, but again, I think it's a question of whatever. Uh, music is played and whatever noise analysis is undertaken if we comply with the noise ordinance and that is. Uh, determination of decibel levels at the receptor property line, which is not only behind our building, but across Village Creek and then. At the other end, for, for those residential neighbors who admittedly may be concerned. I, I think there are ample safeguards in place that, given where this, this particular area is, that that should not be an issue. But we will provide you with a noise report and if, if you deem it necessary for us to do something, again, let's just say in two months' time. Um, that may be something, another thing that would give you the level of comfort perhaps that's necessary for you to think this is appropriate.
Okay. Go ahead, I'm sorry.
Question for Liz. When I read this application to start with, I had in my, you know, mind kind of, uh. Corn stands and tomatoes and. Hay wagons and stuff. I- i- is this going to be like a, a bar? Situation with, you know, rock and roll bands? Is that's what's anticipated?
Oh, um, Mr. Mr. Rowena, it's a small area to begin with. There is a bar that's already created, which was created as part of the 2011 approval. And it, there's not that much space in this area for people to congregate. And it has to be a certain, a square footage and it has to accommodate a certain number of people in order for my client to secure a restaurant permit. But, um, they have to serve meals. It has to be operated like a restaurant. There could be, uh, vegetables and fruit sold there as part of the farmer's market component. But it's largely going to be, um, those individuals who operate out of the commercial kitchen. Whatever they produce inside would be part and parcel of what's sold outside, both by way of meals and also the products that they produce, whether it's. Baked goods or full meals or a combination of the two. Many of the. Uh, the chefs that operate out of the kitchen right now will be the chefs who will prepare the meals for the restaurant component of this farmer's market and beer garden. But they can also sell some of their, uh, their items to the public just as they do today. But as far as what the types of bands, what types of music is, is proposed, we don't have that as yet. But again, it has to comply with the noise ordinance. We're obligated to do that. I mean, any music played is played toward the parking lot since. That's the natural, that, that would be the most appropriate with, so noise would be directed toward Wilson Avenue and not back toward Village Creek. That's just, you know, not inward. It would largely be directed outward.
I was just trying to get a better understanding on, on what the concept is. I obviously had it wrong in my mind when I read the application. Um, I wasn't here for the original approvals back in 2011 and 12. So thanks for the summary.
Yeah, but by no means are we going to be doing any kind of rock and roll concerts and selling tickets or anything like that.
All right, Steve, what is it we're looking for here? Just a motion to approve?
Yeah, that would, yeah, that's, uh, just have the, it's a CAM site plan review, so. And public hearing is at your discretion, but other than that, you can act on it tonight.
Okay. Um, what's the pleasure of the commission members?
I'm torn. Um, I, I feel very. Strongly about Village Creek being involved in the decision-making process. In the sense that I think they should have input. In a public hearing. But I'm not sure.
I think it might be, you know, um. I guess a, a good thing to do, maybe a public hearing so that the Village Creek residents can voice their opinion, even though this applicant clearly said they're going to comply. With all the regulations, everything, but I do know people probably would like to say something.
Galen?
I, I have mixed feelings too. I mean, I, it already was approved. It was operating for a number of years. And this doesn't sound like it's anything different than what was there before. Do we have any history of there being complaints? Was there music there before, Attorney Sachi? I don't, I mean, I was there in the afternoon and I don't.
It was approved in 2013 to be provided, and I believe there were a few events where music was, was, was offered.
Was, is there any record of any complaint?
There is no.
Not as far as I know of. I, I was not made aware of any. I don't think staff has any information on complaints that were raised or shared with the police department. We could certainly find out. As a matter of fact, I've, I've asked Deputy Chief Zeca to provide me with that information if there happens to be any. But since this just came up this week that there is a question of perhaps the necessity or desire for a public hearing, it was not something that we were anticipating. We also have retained, already retained a noise consultant to undertake that work once this is operational, to give you that level of comfort in that analysis. But again, it, it's up to you. If you feel that it's, it's necessary to hold a hearing, certainly within your discretion. I will tell you though, that I'm, I'm trying to find it right now, just the number of individuals to whom I sent notice on Village Creek, and it's probably in excess of fifteen. If I can find that, let's see, there's one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine, 10, 11. There's probably in excess of fifteen. And, and all the individuals that were on Split Rock Road whose property is back up onto Village Creek. And then no one contacted me. I don't believe anyone has contacted staff. I, I don't want to speak for staff. But certainly if, if folks had concerns, they certainly could have reached out to me. I'd be happy to talk to them. But I, I think there's more than ample evidence that, that this area is small enough that the type of activity that's going to be undertaken is not going to be ticket sales for concerts in the parking lot. It's really an accessory to the, the market experience, the beer garden experience. It's not the primary reason that people would attend, but it's just something to, that will happen to a company and complement the, the market and, and the beer garden.
How long was the, was the business in operation after the approval?
After the twenty, 2011 approval, it operated through just mid-2014, there about. And it was.
I didn't, I didn't understand that to be the case. So this actually functioned for two and a half years before it closed, for whatever the reason?
That's correct. And it was operational with live music for a year. From 2013 to 2014.
Now I'm leaning more towards what Galen said. I didn't realize that it was actually.
Yeah, we, we never had any complaints. You know, we were very courteous of the neighbors. Only, it's a very controlled environment. And again, no concerts, we're not selling tickets. The music will be basically just an accompaniment to the actual beer garden experience. So there's no reason to blast the music in any other direction except for a localized sound. And we'll make sure we abide by those sound ordinance as well.
Steve, is it possible to break this into two pieces? To approve all uses except for music and hold the hearing on the music?
Good question. I would think that's something you could do. I'd have to, I don't know if Brian could pull the resolution up, but I mean, I think you could also if, if you had concerns about that and if the, you know, because sometimes people make complaints, but i- is it a violation? But I think if, if there was a violation of the noise ordinance, then I could think you could, you know, have a condition to the effect that they're in violation of their approval and then revoke the music or, or take that kind of action on it.
Yeah, we, we'd have no problem with that.
I apologize, Brian. Can you make that just a little bit larger? Thank you.
So these were a couple, at least number 10 here was a carryover from the original approval. And then this is the one we've been discussing about requiring the sound study in order to get the zoning permit.
Right.
Yes, you could add a number right after 10 and, you know, about, you know, if, if they violate, found to be in violation of the noise ordinance, potential revocation of the permission to have live or outdoor music.
Yeah, I think we, I mean, if we could be more specific on that, because that's kind of what 16 is. This is the section of the regs where it says if you violate any of your conditions of approval, that you're subject to permit revocation. But if you want to spell it out more clearly, that if it's specifically noise, then we could do that too.
I think.
I would think that would be the big one.
To just leave what you got, because there may be other violations of the of, of the approval. We don't, I'm limited to noise, do we?
We don't want to limit it to noise. On the other hand, we don't want to take, take away the permit just because of the noise. It seems to me we simply want to stop the noise. So it might make sense to leave what's there, there, and have a separate one saying that if they're in violation of the noise ordinance, we have the right to eliminate the use of music.
I think that's fair.
Would that, is, is that acceptable to the other commissioners?
Acceptable to me.
Yeah, it's acceptable to me too.
This is acceptable to me.
Okay, does someone want to make a motion that we approve the revised this revised approval?
Sure, I'll do it. Just kidding.
I'll second it.
Someone who has authority to make the motion, wish to make the motion.
You said anyone.
On, on the, the, the condition that Brian's typing up, the question is, should it be a may or a shall, whereas before resolve?
I say may.
Yeah, I think I, I agree. Because if it's, if it's a, an accidental violation, we don't want to be obligated to remove the permit.
I think that's fine.
Okay. All right. Can I have a motion from one of the commissioners to approve this?
Oh, move.
Okay, motion made by Richard and seconded by Michael. Let's do a, a roll call on this.
Sure. Want to do it, Brian? Go ahead. Mr. Rowena?
Yes.
Mr. Witherspoon?
Yes.
Ms. Wells?
Yes.
And Mr. Schulman?
Yes, but have you left out Ms. Sapon?
Oh. Hi, Mr. Sapon, sorry about that. Yes, would you like to?
Vote yet.
Oh, she may not be sworn in yet.
Oh, okay.
Sorry about that. Just a technical thing. I need to make sure I do it all officially.
Okay.
Thank you, everyone, for your time, and we appreciate this evening.
Thank you, everybody. We look forward to seeing you over at the beer garden.
For anyone else, I'll be there.
All right, thank you very much.
Bye-bye.
Bye-bye.
Okay. Next item, 2021-3122, Washington Street, live music request, real posto.
Oh, I have to recuse myself from this.
Okay.
Sorry.
I moved that we approve it. We've approved so many of the live music on Washington Street.
Exactly.
I did, I did check in a little on that question you had about if the police has gotten any complaints regarding any of these recent approvals. So far, they've said because of COVID, this whole last year's kind of been slow. So there, any complaints have gone, has been down. So.
There have been some complaints on Washington Street in general, the last couple of weeks. I know you may have seen the city took action to remove some of the barriers. I guess people were kind of
Right.
congregating out in the areas. I didn't hear anything specific to any music, but just kind of noise in general of activity.
Okay. All right, so we have a motion. We need a second, Michael?
Okay.
Okay. All those in favor, we'll do it just by raising hands. Among those of us voting, it's unanimous. Is that an official action, given there were only three of us?
Yeah, I believe it's the majority of the, of the quorum.
Okay. That's fine. Now, just about everybody on Washington Street has the right to.
We still have more coming in now. I think I got one more.
Okay, discussion of the other items. The status report on the industrial zone study. Steve?
Sure, I, right after this, I've got to look at some maps to make sure that they make sense. And then I'll, hopefully I'll get the revised draft tomorrow morning. And then I'll have Brian and some other people read through it tomorrow if they hadn't planned on that already. And then hopefully I'll get that out by Friday afternoon to the committee members. Give them a few weeks to review the report and comment, and then we can convene and have discussion about what's in there. I think it, what's in there makes sense. I don't think everybody's going to be happy with some of the recommendations in there, but I think it makes sense for the broader, broader community. So we'll put it out there and see what everybody says.
Okay. The zoning regulation rewrite?
So next Thursday night at six is the first meeting of the, kind of the public presentation where the consultant's going to just give their initial thoughts and, and overview of the process. And then I think there's time for some Q and A after that. I think they're kind of ballparking about two hours total for that.
Has, has everyone here been interviewed by them?
Um, Josh had to cancel and reschedule. So that was one of the outstanding ones. And then obviously we got to loop Marcel in at, at some juncture whenever she's comfortable with that, with that already.
I did my interview last Friday.
I didn't do mine. I, I had forgotten about it. And then when I got the email, my term had expired, so.
Well, we can, I can circle back with, I can send an email to the whole group and, and ask who hasn't yet. And then try to coordinate a block of times with the consultant to get that done.
Okay. South Newark TOD study?
There was a really brief meeting today. I think they're kind of revamping their community outreach efforts. I think that's the long and short of it.
Right, yeah, the meeting was about four minutes.
Yeah.
Okay. Discussion of merging the Planning and Zoning Commissions. There was a public hearing last night held by the ordinance committee. The, the only comments received were negative. There were three written comments and one person spoke live, and they all suggested that the Planning and Zoning Commissions not be recombined. And my understanding is there'll really be no further action before September. When they'll consider moving it to the full common council. Get that about right, Steve?
Yeah, I think so. I mean, I, I don't agree with the reasons they stated con, but I, but they, you are correct.
What were their reasons?
Meeting on YouTube?
It should be. I don't know if it's been uploaded yet, but it will be. It, it sometimes.
The ordinance committee?
The ordinance committee, yeah, right, yep.
Yeah, I'll try to watch it. I couldn't actually go to the meeting last night to hear it.
I've had trouble with that. I couldn't even go to my own meeting when I was being reappointed. I could see my name on the screen, but.
I, I, I was there for you. Okay. Approval of the minutes of June 23rd. Can I have a motion?
So move.
Motion by, by Michael, second?
Second.
Second from Richard. Any corrections, changes, deletions? If not, all those in favor? Unanimous? And finally, comments of directors. Now that we're face to face, I just wanted to welcome Marcela onto the commission. Look forward to her, her full participation.
Yeah, you gotta go get signed, get sworn in.
Okay, any other comments from anyone else?
After watching all the presentations tonight with the white beards, I'm going to shave tomorrow morning. That's my comment.
Well, I think the beard looks good.
Oh, my God, I just, I wish it was one color. Oh, well.
All right, anything else? If not, comments from Steve?
Nothing else, no.
Okay. Motion to adjourn?
So move.
Okay, Richard made the motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, Michael seconds. All those in favor, raise your hands. All right, we are adjourned. Stay healthy. See you, well, hope to see you all next week at the kickoff. If not, we'll see you on August 5th.
Sounds good.